Good evening, I'm Dan Eastgate, President of the Bismarck School Board. It's 5:15 on Monday, April 14th, I call this meeting to order. Welcome and thank you for joining us both here and also online. You can find our agenda and follow along under the School Board tab at bismarckschools.org. Mr. Scher, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eastgate?
Here.
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Preski?
Here.
Dr. Fosnot, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
The BPS mission, vision, and values. The BPS mission is to empower every learner to thrive. The BPS vision states, together, our strong relationships build inclusive, collaborative, and innovative environments that create agency and inspire a passion for learning, excellence, and discovery. The BPS values are inclusion, excellence, innovation, and leadership. You can also find a link in the agenda to the BPS strategic plan. Item two is to adopt the agenda. What are the wishes of the board? Mr. Lee?
Mr. President, I would move that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Scher, will you call the roll?
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item three is the focus on success. Three A is math attributes and thinking strategies. Dr. Fosnot?
Good afternoon, Board members. Nice to be with you again. Tonight, we have to talk to us about our focus of success on math. AP from Wachter Middle School will lead us out, Ms. Angie Eddinger.
Good evening, Angie.
Welcome.
I'm Angie Eddinger, Assistant Principal at Wachter Middle School, and I'm also one of the secondary math portfolio holders, along with Ryan Reel from Legacy, Mark Lardy from Bismarck High, Summer Chesek from Wachter, and then Daphne Hyde, who is our LDI rep. Our focus this year has been on thinking strategies. And what that means is maybe a little more or less direct instruction and a more facilitator on the side approach. Our goal as a math group has been to get kids thinking, and not only to think, but to talk with one another about their thinking. Tonight, we have Kate Fox, who is a Century High teacher. She currently teaches geometry and Avid, and she also assists with both cross-country and track. She wears many hats. She's a University Mary grad, and I heard she does run a mean 400-meter dash, if anybody wants to race her. We also have Jessica Variano, who is a specialist at Wachter Middle School. She coaches our mathletes program at Wachter as well, and also is a UMary grad. She has been with Bismarck Public Schools for 16 years, and she also is spearheading our eighth-grade formal in a few weeks. So if any of you want to chaperone, she also is taking recommendations and would be willing to have your help. So tonight, we have Kate and Jessica.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Eastgate, members of the school board, Dr. Fosnot. Do you want me to bring it down? Yeah, so a little bit, foot difference at least, for sure. As she said, my name is Kate Fox, and I just wanted to share about a learning opportunity that myself, as well as about 20 BPS employees, got to go explore in the district. We, in December, went down to Denver and did a Minds on Math conference. As you can see here, we focused on thinking strategies. So these were seven ideas that we touched on over the three days, among many other things, but we got to do activities and really be in the learner's spot, rather than the teacher's spot, looking through these things. One of the activities that we did was visualize and represent, and once it comes up on this next slide here, you'll be able to see those different examples. We were able to...oh, I'll talk about this. I switched that, but that's okay. We really have noticed at Century High School that these seven strategies have linked to our math attributes that we have in the district. It's problem-solving, it's connections, it's reasoning and proof. And all of these three umbrellas really encompass those seven learning strategies, and it was really, really cool to see those go hand-in-hand and just see different strategies and different ways that we could work with this stuff. So now, looking at that next slide, we will see one of the strategies that we worked through. This is visualizing and representing. Again, we were in the learner's spot. I was paired with three or four other people from the United States, other teachers, whether it was a secondary teacher, a primary teacher, or just a specialist. And this was really cool to see, because this is an example of every learner learns in a different way and they see math differently. So our assignment for this is we were given a task, and we had to represent it in three different ways. And it was just really cool to see how all those different minds thought. And this was a cool opportunity to see how students think and how students are acting in our classroom. The next slide you will see, this is something that I've actually been implementing in my classroom at Century. I have really been focusing on how to ask questions of my students and how they should talk to each other. So in the bigger picture, we see two students leading their peers in a classroom discussion. They had learned the lesson the day before, and then the next day, they were teaching their peers, and they weren't just giving answers, they were actually using really good questioning strategies to get their peers to think about the learning. And then in the other picture, this was during some individual work time, and it was just peers helping peers. The gentleman standing up, he's not just telling the kid sitting down how to do the problem, he's saying, what do you know here? What notes do you have? What things can we look at to help you through this problem? And that's something that doesn't get learned overnight. This is a behavior that we have been working on since August, but it has been really cool to actually see it and play with these students. Okay, and then we can go ahead and go to the next one. These were just my main points of emphasis that I took away from the whole experience. The people who were leading the conference down there started every day with this quote. They said, "Take responsibility for your own learning and for supporting the learning of others." And I just thought that was a really good thing to also implement in our own classrooms, because at the end of the day, that's what students should be doing. They should really want to take the initiative on their own to learn about everything and process through it. And the way we do that is with the student-led discussions, and that's what allows for the multiple avenues of learning. And now Jessica's going to go ahead and share a couple of things she's been doing in her classroom.
As a specialist, my learners always learn much different. Many of them have struggled in math over and over again. And so I have found that just being able to determine the importance, some of these strategies I was able to just bring back right away and tie into the curriculum I use. I teach core replacement classes, and so we're talking maybe three to four grade levels below their middle-school peers. For example, we just determine what we actually need to know in the word problem and just kind of push those problem-solving strategies. And as they solve it and go through the process, I mean, the biggest thing at the end is, does your answer make sense? Some are so quick to just do those basic math problems, and yep, this is my answer, this is what I got, but don't ever make that deeper connection to it. I'm going to go to the next slide. Another strategy is that visualize and represent. Again, this is just an activity I added when we were working on denominator or fractions and understanding denominators and sizes. Again, the kids just, they laid out fractions in order, thinking they knew what to do, and then they had to prove their reasoning with the fraction models, and I gave them very little, like, direction to it, but they were quick to kind of look deeper into it and be like, oh yeah, that doesn't really make sense. So that was fun to see. And my position as a teacher was just to ask the questions. I wasn't...we were quick to correct, but this has kind of taught me to kind of back off and let them do the thinking and the solving and how to correct that piece. And then some of my main takeaways from the overall experience and the conference we attended, these are strategies that can be implemented in any curriculum, any activity you're doing in your classroom. The students need to be the ones doing the math. Again, we're quick to, nope, that's wrong, this is the answer, but, oh, can you show me how you got that answer? Is a better way to kind of guide that learning, less I do and you do, but having them solve it. And then just trying to find that balance, I guess the word would be, what was it? Productive struggle. Letting them struggle a bit, but no one to pop in and guide their understanding and their reasoning, but also let them discover if they're right or wrong, so.
And as we just shared some of our personal takeaways, we just kind of want to touch on what we're doing school-wide and district-wide. So within the district, we've had a couple of different demonstrations. So a few of the teachers that went down in December, they were observed, and we had teachers within the buildings and teachers within the district that came and watched those lessons, so that they could take notes, so they could see what are we working on with these thinking strategies. And that's been a very cool opportunity to spread all of our knowledge that we have. But then we also are talking about that trial and error process, where just because one of these strategies works well for me or works well for Jessica, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. We have to consider the learners that are in front of us, the age range that's in front of us, and then just our own teaching characteristics of what works and what is best suited for our classroom. So that was something that was really unique about this opportunity, is we learned about so many different things, and there was no way that we can try to implement all of these things in our classroom. But if you look at the background knowledge, or the questioning, or the inferring, if we just pick one of those things to introduce into our classrooms, it's going to make a huge difference for our learners. And the way we can do that is through our different discourse, through different thinking strategies. And then there was also a common theme of the conference. It was called Rich Tasks, and that just means give students something harder than just a yes or no question. Give them a question that maybe they'll never even know if they arrived at a final answer or not. But the idea is that they did that productive struggle through the process, they were able to think, they were able to have student-led discussions with everyone. And our last thing that we have with this, we really would love for all of our educators in the district to be able to attend this conference. There is a group going down this spring, and then we are also getting some more introductions to it within the district this fall. So we're very excited to share that with everyone. And so thank you for your time, and we stand for any questions you may have.
Awesome, thanks very much. Board members, any questions? Looking for any green lights. Well, thank you both for coming up and sharing tonight. Productive struggle, I think everybody probably wrote that down. That's good for workplace as well as the classroom, so thanks very much for all you guys do. Yes, please.
All right.
Oh, Dr. Fosnot has a question.
I got a question for you. Sorry, have to put you on the spot. You're an avid teacher.
I am an avid teacher.
All right, so Kate, you're talking about how to ask questions, respond to questions. That's very avid-like, right? Do you want to make the connection for people who may not know the connection between being a tutor in that situation, helping others get to the right question to get the right answer?
Oh, absolutely. So as you said, I'm an avid teacher. I teach freshmen and sophomores rotating through the years at Century. And a lot of those skills that we focus on in that classroom, those are mimicked within these thinking strategies. And that's what's really cool, is just because a kid isn't an avid, if we start introducing these into the math classroom or any classroom, they're going to learn through these things, which is great. So it's not just avid kids who would benefit from this stuff. Now we're reaching a larger audience, which is really awesome. Yeah.
Thank you again. Great question, great answer. Love that's getting out there. Moving on to the agenda, we go to item four, which is public comment. The board recognizes the central role that parents play in the education of their children and support active parent involvement in the educational process. The board's practice of public comment reflects and aligns with policy BCBA and the spirit of its intent. For classroom issues, it's best to follow the chain of command from the teacher to the principal to the assistant superintendent, and ultimately to the superintendent. For district-wide issues, please reach out to Dr. Fosnot's office. If anyone does speak tonight, we simply ask that you be responsible, be helpful, and be respectful. Our BPS students deserve to have adults model the expectations that we have for them. Groups are urged to select one spokesperson. Individuals will be limited to no more than four minutes and will be notified with 30 seconds remaining. The board does not debate issues as presented, but will take such matters under advisement. With that, please stand and approach the podium if you'd like to speak tonight. Seeing nobody come to the podium, public comment will now be closed. Item five is to monitor district operations. Dr. Fosnot, I believe we have five A, R 2.1 Academic Achievement Mathematics.
Right, and tonight, I'll let Dr. Johnson present that to the board. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Evening, Dr. Johnson.
Good evening. Claiming a little bit of double duty for Mr. Barnhart here, so apologize if I fumble through. Thank you, President Eastgate, members of the board. I stand here happy to talk about results one, 2.0, mathematics. Bismarck Public Schools has made reasonable progress on all six indicators. I believe that we continue to demonstrate through our great teachers and our students and working with their families to be able to show that consistent and measurable growth for mathematics across multiple grade levels and varying assessments. The district outperforms the state average in nearly all categories and is focused on refining our instruction, our assessments, our alignment, those teaching practices, as well as making sure that we're addressing subgroups growth. The systems and structures, like our guiding coalitions, our curricular audits, and the professional development that you're seeing and was addressed here this evening, are showing positive impacts. That strategic work is underway and supports our sustainable progress towards the upcoming state standards that we've now transitioned to and the new assessments that are coming here this spring. Briefly, I will say that as we take a look at our North Dakota state assessments, we've outperformed the district on those areas. We also have outperformed, as we take a look at the ACT, and a little bit of broken record for you, I've talked about the ACT as well, in that with the data that you're looking at, that is all of our students having taken the ACT, one in nine students approximately goes to Bismarck, so we have all, not everyone has all, so when we're outperforming, we're really doing well. If you did have a quick question, I'm just highlighting this on the subgroup, because it was a question that I had when we first were developing the report. Usually you get one answer, and there's these bands such as in the growth subgroups, you can see the Asian is 50 to 58, or Pacific Islander, 10 to 16. Why does that exist? The state report that comes forward lists a band when the subgroup is so small that they don't want to provide enough information that you could start making predictions on an individual student that might fit that category. So that's why those bands are listed, and that's just the reporting to try to help keep that privacy in the data. So those are not errors in those three areas, but I just wanted to highlight that, because again, that was one of my questions when our team was reviewing. And again, thanks to many of the people here, as well as Andrew Seibel, Daphne, Karen Arnold, and some others who have helped prepare this work, and obviously, the portfolio holders taking the time, and ultimately, our teachers who are in the trenches doing this work day in, day out with our students. We continue to see areas of growth, not only in the ACT and NDSA, but we use the MAP, NWA, our MAP results, and that's really consistent, long-term data, again, shooting for having 50% of our students or more. That's the target where we're at. We continue to hover right around that area at 49.3. We increased a couple of percentages from last year. So we take a look at the growth categories, again, we mark making reasonable progress as many of those categories are showing strong growth. And again, the test is designed to basically norm and not have, just have about 50% of people making progress or not. So when we are above that, even in our subgroups, that's something, I think, to just be lifted up. And I believe we had eight of our nine that really made large improvements, and even some of those was just down a point one, for example, on a Pacific Islander. So again, small areas, not large losses there. Our systems of improvement, again, as we talked about, have allowed for our standards that we have reported out here, as well as the letter grades, where we're targeting a 2.5 or a B letter grade at six through eight and nine through 12. And you can just see some of that. What's great out there is just because we didn't have that reporting in the years past, and so we're just trying to be consistent with that as we move forward. But it's a great opportunity to realize that we are making great levels and gains at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. And I think that's through a lot of intentional work, and I know Ms. Eddinger and Mr. Reel and Ms. Hyde, along with Ms. Arnold and others, have really been talking too with the teachers about the vocabulary and being really key on aligning that vocabulary, that's that academic knowledge, being clear when we say, you know, a circle. Does a really circle mean, maybe that's an easier, but estimate, do we mean estimate meaning the same thing from teacher to teacher? So getting that clarity on that, I think, has really helped start to align some of that work as students progress through our system. And again, we've shared in past years, when students progress through our system, they have really good outcomes when they're here long-term. That being said, as we look forward with the new assessments, we'll get some new data, and we'll have to take a look into what that means and how we can interpret that. But we do know that the guiding coalitions and these PK-12 alignment steering committees have been really crucial to making sure that we have a comprehensive and as flawless as we can to help students and parents navigate as their students go through. That work is really based in our standards reference, and we use those policies, or sorry, our proficiency skills to really inform the professional development that's needed. And so we'll continue to look at the data as that goes forward. I'd stand for any questions at this time, President Eastgate and members of the board.
Board members, any questions at all for Dr. Johnson? I know I have one, if they're thinking about them. So I'm just looking at that last page of the report underneath indicator six, and I do see an asterisk by it, so I'm just looking to see if I missed it here or not, Dr. Johnson. But I was impressed that our middle school, it's more of an observation than a question, but maybe you can just confirm, but our middle school jumped up 8% on that indicator six. Is the asterisk just because we went from the standards to the letter? Is that what that's representing?
Correct. So now, we had some letter grades before, but it was based upon a standards conversion, where now it's just a total point. Still, again, our standards are driving our instruction and assessment, but it's just calculated in a different way.
So the jump would still be indicate that we had that much improvement, though, either way. That's great. Board, Ms. Peterson?
I kind of have just a comment, too, just with the crowd and everything else. I just always really appreciate when the focus on success aligns to the report, and this is a really positive report, so hopefully, the team is seeing that the data is following all of the work that you guys are doing. So appreciate that and hope to continue to see growth in an area that has been kind of a struggle nationwide and statewide. So, thank you.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Board members, how do you find R 2.1 Academic Achievement Mathematics? Ms. Preski?
Yeah, I would move that we find R 2 Academic Achievement Mathematics as making reasonable progress.
I would second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you again to all the educators in the room tonight. On the agenda, item underneath five B, BSR-1 Single Point of Connection, we have a public reading of that tonight, and then the board can decide if they'd like to retain or amend, and if we're in compliance or not. Here is that public reading. Single Point of Connection. The superintendent is the board's sole point of connection to the operational organization. The board will direct the operational organization only through the superintendent functioning as the chief executive officer. Signing Authority. The superintendent or their designee is authorized by the board to sign agreements, contracts, and other official documents on behalf of the board. This delegation of signing authority does not extend to matters explicitly reserved by the board. This brings the end of the reading, BSR-1 Single Point of Connection. Board members, any comments or motions? Mr. Hager?
I would move to retain BSR-1 Single Point of Connection.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further conversation? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Also, board members, just determining if we're in compliance or out of compliance or in compliance with exception. Mr. Hager?
I'd move to find us in compliance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item six on the agenda, Matters Reserved for Board Action, six A, Board Member's School Visit Updates. I know we have at least one, so I'm going to start with Mr. Hager, and if anybody else is up after that, you can turn on your light, and we'll go to you. Mr. Hager?
Thanks, President Eastgate. So I got a school visit here for Grimsroot. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Upton for all her time. I was there, what was supposed to be scheduled for an hour, and was there for almost two, so I appreciate her being so available with her time. Just a couple of comments I would make on the walk up to the building, so it was one of those days where it was supposed to get a lot of snow, and we didn't, so we got mostly kind of rain and kind of sleet coming down. And as you look at the design of Grimsroot in terms of moving water off of that roof with all the various pitch lines, and just not the best design for downspouts like we've seen with our designs these days. So nothing structural with the building, just struck me as odd that there's water falling off all of these different spots, and as I was walking up. One other thing, too, kind of about the building, and I know this is something that was brought to us at a board meeting in the past, kind of the idea of some rework that maybe could be done at Grimsroot, is you look at the bathrooms there, it's the original green tile. Heard a story of a brother and a sister within the school there, that one of the siblings can't attend Grimsroot because she has accessible issues and the bathrooms aren't set up for her, so she has to go to a different school. So those kind of stories always kind of tug at the heartstrings a little bit to have one sibling have to be at a different school, just because that particular building isn't set up for her needs. So beyond that, it's always fun to walk into elementary schools, you know, they're always a hive of activity. As you walk in, one of the things that struck me, too, is the season was March Madness basketball season. So this is right up Mr. Eastgate's alley. On the wall, they had a March Madness bracket specific to their favorite book characters. So the winner, to me, was a little bit of a surprise, I've read these books to my son in the past, was The Pigeon from Mo Williams Books. SpongeBob took second, one of the kids I was visiting in the halls was disappointed, and the result was not his pick. So, like I said, I spent a lot of time with Dr. Upton. We talked about, you know, the different challenges that she has to deal with there at Grimsroot, and I was really impressed with how she took what I would perceive as challenges and turned those around and said, well, you know, here's how we're going to address those. I mean, she had a solution or a thought for anything that was, in my mind, deemed a challenge. She talked about her staff, and she couldn't say enough good things about her staff at Grimsroot, and getting to see a few of them in action, too, it's, I can see where she's coming from with some of them. You know, some of the challenges that we talked about, things that we've heard here at the board, you know, bell time, challenges and adjustments that they'll have to work through next year, sub-challenges, I know, Dr. Fosnot, you've addressed some of that already. Another one that was, I guess I would deem a challenge, is the EL population at Grimsroot. So they have 29% of the kids are EL kids at Grimsroot. She said she has three times the number of EL students that she's had just a handful of years ago. So with that, the challenge is having your smartphone, being able to translate, you know, to parents in particular, when you want to talk to them about the student. But with that, it also provides an opportunity. So another thing that's on the wall when you first walk in is a map. And on that map, there are pins showing where some of the kids are originally from. So there was pins in Central America, South America, Africa, Eastern Europe, I mean, it covered the entire globe. So with that, provides the opportunity for them to learn about each other's culture. So one of the neat things, that particular month was more around topography, so they were learning about, okay, where I came from was deserts, or mountains, or flowers, or different things that they had back where they came from, and sharing those experiences and those things with the other students. One of the highlights, it's always fun to watch students in action. So this was a highlight for me. I asked him if I could use his name, he said I could. So a gentleman named Emilio, he was in the hallway helping an EL student. So Emilio's fluent in Spanish. What struck me when he first walked up was his age, and I looked at him, and I thought, boy, he looks young for an aide. So Dr. Upton said, tell him, you're a student, so tell him where your student at. So I expected, BSC or UMary? No, he's a Century High School student. So Emilio, who's fluent in Spanish, during his two off-hours, he comes down to Grimsroot to help work with EL students down at Grimsroot. I was very impressed that he would take his two off periods to come down there and do that. Further, Emilio is a former Grimsroot student. I mean, he's very well-spoken, very confident. He was asking me questions about my role and why I was there. I was very impressed with this young man, and I even told him at one point, I said, if we do not run into each other in this community, when you graduate next year, I will see you on that stage. So I was very, very impressed with him. So Dr. Upton and I walked away, had some other questions pop up in my mind, so we happened to be coming back down the hallway. So Emilio and I was working with a different student, and you could tell how those boys that he was working with really look up to him. I don't know if he fully appreciates how much of a role model he is for those kids, but they do, they look up to him. You know, he'd translate a little bit and say, okay, now, now in English, answer the question in English. So in our walk back, asked him a question, you know, how many students you work with? And he said, you know, I've been working with six recently. The other day, I was in second-grade classroom and I was helping a kid with some Russian. And I stopped and I said, wait, I thought you were fluent in Spanish, what do you mean, Russian? And he goes, I speak and understand a little bit of Russian and a little bit of Mandarin Chinese. And for the languages, those three, Spanish, Russian, Mandarin, Chinese, was absolutely blown away by him. It was an amazing visit, talking a little bit with Dr. Upton, I know Dr. Johnson, too, about that program, having the high school kids come down and help those elementary school kids was impressive. I don't know, Dr. Johnson, if you had, or Dr. Fosnot, if you have a little bit more on that, but I thought that was really cool.
Thank you, President Eastgate and Board Member Hager. Again, if Mr. Barnhart was here, I hope that I can honor his perspective, too, but my understanding is the school psychologist, Mrs. Bridget Johnson, and the social worker, Liz Schmidt-Kunz, talked about developing a program, and they saw a need around our students and how we might be able to connect some of our multilingual EL newcomers. And so they went to Director of Student Support Services, Danica Nelson, Lisa Simmons, the EL Coordinator, Dr. Upton, obviously the principal at Grimsrud, and Mr. Mather at CHS, and really rallied around this idea of, could we have some high school students? And we currently have about 16 to 17 high school students from Century who are pitched this idea of, they're level three or four students, so juniors, seniors, or have advanced to that level, and they work around, as you said, their times, multiple times throughout the day, some of them throughout the week, and they went through a presentation and was, and thank you to the Foreign Language Department, too, to be willing to allow for some time to pitch this idea. And then they applied, and they went through an interview process and a paper as well as a structured interview and were hired. Particularly, my understanding in speaking to these individuals is that originally it was just about social and emotional supports and needs with especially transitioning to a new country and just the learning, the shock, some of our students, as Dr. Fosnot had shared, have not had formal education in any form. And so the target was originally the about 20 to 30 of the upper elementary students at Grimsrud, and I know there's some younger students that are having some, their needs met as well. But it's really looking to support through that intentional membership or mentorship, and really, learning English is kind of an aside now. Of course, our students are wanting to practice their language skills as well, but we really do believe that it's an opportunity, even if they're not able to make all the great gains, there's just that initially ease and finding another caring, younger, but older adult that they can look to. Right now, there is work that's going beyond the social emotional, and they're beginning to try to develop what does it mean to help assist in those academic skills such as reading and mathematics. But a great opportunity for our older students to ease our younger students in transitioning to a new home that may be very different from where they were, and not only coming to the United States, but feeling welcomed and finding a niche and a caring environment. And I love that story of, you know, kind of paying it forward, at least to someone else that walked those same hallways. And what a great opportunity for leadership, and I'm just very impressed with all the leadership of our personnel that I mentioned above, and to being able to say yes and make it happen, how can we make it happen versus where the barriers, so.
You kind of mentioned, Mr. Hager, the technology they're using. I mean, we talk about cell phones, but we're, I want to compliment, you already kind of picked up on it, Mr. Mullen or IT team, because we rotate cell phones, it's just, we have staff with them, they age out, you know, instead of just throwing them in a bin somewhere, he's been repurposing those to use as translation devices. That was a good temporary fix when she wasn't at three, four times the number of EL kids as she has now, as Dr. Upton said, but it was a great program. All the credit goes to the members Dr. Johnson mentioned. Now it's like, we have to replicate that. We can do that in more schools, and really, we have so many young people who could really help us, because we can't find enough people to speak these languages to help these kids. Let's use some of the talent we already have in our schools and then give them a job, let them make a little extra money or get an experience that they, you know, just helps make them a better person. So I'm glad you noticed it, it's awesome.
Yeah, it was really neat to see. So I just want to thank Dr. Upton again for all her time and being so gracious with her time and showing me around the school.
That's awesome. Thanks a lot, Mr. Hager, Dr. Johnson, thanks for adding in on that as well, and I think we can all, we're all kind of, you know, smiling and nodding our heads, because there's just a lot of wins in that story. You know, we talk about a win for the student himself, the Grimsrud student, the mentor, the school, VPS. I sure hope we're pursuing Emilio to enter teaching. We'd like to bring him back. Dr. Fosnot, write his name down, and make sure we greet him at the graduation this year, but that's exactly the kind of things that I love to see at VPS, to say, we're going to solve a lot of problems, you know, not only do we solve a problem, we made it a great success for everybody. So I just really appreciate it coming out in that story, Josh, thanks a lot for sharing. Not a lot of, there were a little bit of productive struggle in there, but not a lot of, you know, more productive than struggle, that's for sure, so, I'm going to keep using that word. Any other school visits from board members tonight? Seeing no lights on, we'll move on in our agenda. Item six B is R 2.1 Academic Achievement Social Studies Indicators. Dr. Fosnot?
Well, the team has looked through, a little look and a little ahead, you know, we've been trying to bring recommendations to you to improve and streamline indicators within those results, policies that you have set forth for us. So inside of R 2.1 Academic Achievement Social Studies, the team came forward and said, we have some recommendations for you, Jeff, here's what we think are indicators that are probably not really appropriate anymore, and if I recall, our conversation was, let's streamline these, if we're reporting them somewhere else, let's move them to where they are, and we had some reading literacy-type indicators in this. So their recommendation was to leave those in literacy, let them be reflected there. But then we also had a few that I've put in here that just were difficult to measure anymore, we just don't use the same tests. We have a different testing period, different testing process because of NDSA, that we've made some shifts, and so I provided those to you, but before I get into them, I did give you two considerations, because really, the recommendation is to remove all but two indicators that we really thought would clean it up completely, but challenged by Mr. Eastgate as we went over it, like, indicator nine and 10 are really foundational to social sciences and what we want as a citizen. So I gave you two alternative recommendations tonight, either take the root recommendation that we are just cleaning the whole thing up, including indicator nine or 10, or if you think nine and 10 are still worthy, I would say, kick it back to my team and I, because really, that's something we haven't, I haven't worked on a lot in my tenure here, is to say, how could we provide some evidence for indicators nine and 10, which didn't have any evidence last year, and I don't think we'll have evidence this year, I hadn't planned for it. But again, I'll be honest, we haven't put a lot of, I haven't put a lot of intentionality to say, okay, how could we document that? So I'm open to either recommendation, I just want to get that from the onset. But as you go through, I'll make one quick correction in the document, the redline document. I see we made a mistake in 2.1, we hacked out ELA in literacy, that's coming from an old correction. But inside of 2.1, the definitions, we just removed definitions that were no longer needed due to the recommended changes. Inside the indicators, as, sorry, wrong piece of paper, as we noted, indicator one is now reflected in R 2.1 literacy, indicator two and three are also reflected in literacy, indicator four, this is the same rationale as above, again, that math reading test is in literacy, the pre-ACT on indicator five, we no longer administer because that assessment has changed. We'd retain indicator six and seven, change the grade scope and how we're reporting, aligning with the standards and the letter grade, which you just saw in the math report, and then keep the civics test and that indicator, because we still do that, it's part of graduation requirement. And then indicator eight, this indicator eight, remember, that's the one we have in almost every area, math, social studies, science, we ask for 65% of kids to take those advanced courses, and we kind of talked about that, becomes challenging in all areas. We are taking all those and bringing them into a different report for you to kind of put all in one place. And then nine and 10, again, my team recommended to remove them because we've had trouble providing evidence for those, but again, if you were wanting to kick that back to myself and my team, we could take one more crack at it to see if we could find reasonable and easily garnered evidence for you, for those, too, because I do think they're really foundational to social science and what we expect our kids to have when they graduate. So that's my recommendation to you.
Thanks, Dr. Fosnot, and I do appreciate you taking the opportunity, following our discussion on those two indicators, to come back with some alternative options and that the district could look at it longer. You already kind of said it, I think it, to me, when I read those two, they're just two that I think are very, you know, paramount to what a social studies background would be, whether that needs to be reflected in an indicator, or at least putting it in the document somewhere so that we know that our educators are expected to get kids to there. We were all at the staff recognition this last week, and I'll just citing one of my favorite tributes, Mr. Steve Mather, who everybody knows did a great job at that, but he commented on our, you know, retiring, our other favorite, Mr. Lee, Mr. Perry Lee, but just talking about how he's always done a great job educating above and beyond the classroom, and he's a social studies teacher, and I had the benefit of learning from him, and when I look at nine and 10, those are the kind of things that we hope that students are taking out into the real world. So that's why I questioned them. Again, if there's any reason why we say, hey, we just can't test for it or reflect it, I guess I'm asking, I don't know if that is possible, or maybe it is just something you need more time on.
I do believe we could retain them, as long as you are in agreement that our evidence, we may just keep them as their aspiration. We know they're kind of built into the standards, that's why in the documents that provide you, that core knowledge, that core experience is still built in the standard, it's how do we measure it for an indicator? If you're willing to keep it in there and we can continue to discuss how that's reflected, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Lee?
Oh, sorry. Oh. Thank you, President Eastgate. The only thing I would say, and I completely agree with both of you, these are very important things. If you look at indicator nine, demonstrate global awareness, and you go, you know, back up to the superintendent's interpretation, that second paragraph somewhat addresses that, and I feel probably does a good job of guiding teachers to what's important. I think the first paragraph could probably be tweaked to encompass indicator 10, you know, at least knowing the duties, responsibilities, and rights of citizenship. I wish we could get everybody, adults included, to practice that, but I think that's a tough one, to say we're, you know, going to force people to practice their citizenship, right, or their civic duty. But knowledge is the key thing there, so I would, I could go either way on this. I think it's going to continue to be tough to prove those indicators, which leads me to think, well, maybe we could make the superintendent interpretations a little more robust and encompass that.
Ms. Preskey?
Yeah, that's exactly the point that I was going to bring up, too, is maybe we can put those points in the narrative that is up in that superintendent interpretation and just remove the measurement.
Mr. Hager?
Thanks, President Eastgate. I would kind of echo some of the comments that have already been made here. I think if you look at them as strictly indicators, nine and 10, I would struggle to see how you would specifically measure those, but I do like the idea of, you know, adding them up top under the superintendent's interpretation, just making that a little bit more robust to include those indicators.
Any other, Ms. Peterson?
No, so just wondering on our recommendation, in the two different examples, obviously it was either keep kind of nine and 10 or do, you know, kind of further edits, so just wondering if we, if when we make that motion, we say kind of, do we indicate that? And maybe editing nine and 10 to incorporate into the standards so that you're able, does that kind of make sense? We'll just try to craft it for Mr. Scher and see.
I didn't give you that option. I trust that you always, you always make good motions, I don't know if you ever don't make good motions, so I'll trust you do that, plus your intent, and I can take what I hear you saying, is take nine and 10 and get it into the narrative, get it into the explanation, bring that back to you. I'll bring it back to a second reading. If you don't think it's right, then you can always say, hey, kick it back, we don't like it, just, we'll take it back for another crack at it. Or if you want, we'll bring it back to you as first reading with revisions, either one, however you'd prefer.
President Eastgate, if I may, I have a question. When is the, I know you guys, we said it today during the math one, that the focus on success oftentimes ties to that, and I think that maybe this might be an opportunity for that focus on success, because I do believe, you know, working with a lot of social studies teachers in my tenure, that they're doing a lot of those different pieces, especially the civic engagement in a lot of the activities that they do and in the way that they engage in just the work products, whether it's avid, I mean, we just were, Josh and I were talking about two emails, one avid invitation, one from Erica Qualley from, you know, talking about her time as a milkin educator. I mean, they're doing this civic engagement all the time, so that'd be a nice thing to highlight within that focus as well, so.
I would, again, I'd be okay with retaining indicator six and seven with adhering to your recommendations to incorporate nine and 10 into the narrative and bring it back at second reading.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I completely agree. We know that it's being done, I kind of look at the document as a living document that continues to guide, right? And they've always done a fantastic job with that, and I think this is more saying we want that to continue, you know? So with that, I would move to approve the first reading of the revised coherent governance results indicators, R 2.1 Academic Achievement Social Studies, as presented, noting that nine and 10, we would like to be put up in the indicators.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Mr. Lee?
Yeah, this is for Mr. Scher, not in the indicators and the superintendent's interpretations.
Yes, thank you.
Good correction. Mr. Hager, second reflect that?
Yeah, it does now, second.
Get that wording down. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks for working through that with us, Dr. Fosnot, appreciate that. Item seven is the consent agenda, what are the wishes of the board?
I'll move that we adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Mr. Scher?
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. And item eight, superintendent's report, eight A, Major Projects. Dr. Fosnot?
My apologies, I was writing a note, I was a little checked out there for a second. Major projects, I'd invite Mr. Scher up to the podium, to share where we're at.
Evening, Mr. Scher.
Good evening, Dr. Fosnot, President Eastgate, members of the board. Major projects right now, the one we really are focusing a lot on is our CTE Center and the Silver Ranch Development. We will pour our last chunk of concrete that's on the south side, which is the part we're finishing. We already have portions of the north side poured, so that continues. They were going to put roof on this week, I think they'll probably wait till the wind dies down, and if you've been by and you can kind of see in the pictures, the panels on that south side are, the wall panels are up, and they have wall partitions going up, so that's pretty exciting. You can start to see like storage rooms and toolroom layouts and all that, so that's happening. That's that project. The other one, I'll just point out, on the other ones, is Lincoln is officially finished. You know, we all know that we finished the project in the summer, but it just takes that long to get all of our O and M manuals, all of our punch list items done, all the billing, so that one will show up on there, it does show up on there, it's finished, that's just more for your information. I would answer any questions that the board would have on major projects.
Board members, any questions for Mr. Scher? Don't see any questions, Mr. Scher, thanks very much for the report.
Thank you.
Dr. Fosnot, I don't see anything else in any superintendent's report, so unless you have anything else to add, all agenda items have been considered, I declare this meeting adjourned.